Yep.
Yep.
So I've never heard of, I deal with a lot of contractors, I've never heard of Summers.
Summers, they've been around the area quite a bit. They're a little more from the middle part of the state, but they do a lot of highway jobs and a lot of big stuff around this area too.
Okay.
Good contractor.
Is there a bid qualification process that DERS go through with them?
So we put this project together.
Okay, did we go through with that?
We review their qualifications, they have to meet our bonding requirements and all that stuff. Yep.
Offer a motion to offer a motion to approve a warning contract SU 222-1, East Deerfield Road Reconstruction Project to Summers Concrete, or Summers Concrete, Summers Construction for a base price of $61,369 plus a 10% contingency using funds from borrowed through TID 1.
Second.
So we have a motion on the floor from Trustee Rodden to approve this item, and we have a second from Trustee Schneider. As stated, is there any other further questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Romas.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
President Vinrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Excellent. All right, let's go back to 10B, Resolution 23019, vacate the excess right-of-way of Oakdale Drive. And we're back with Director Smits and his smashing new haircut.
Well, one, one, one second. First, I'm gonna excuse myself from any discussion on this. And I'll be voting, I'll abstain from the voting because I'm related to the property owner here.
Very good, thank you.
All right, the property owner of the southeast quadrant of the intersection of Oakdale Drive and Shady Lane has came in, probably about a year ago already, and he requested that the Public Works and Utility Commission look at the right-of-way up here along Shady Lane and Oakdale Drive. And over the years of the developing village here of Pittsfield and Swamaco and how that intersection was kind of developed and designed, it used to be a teed intersection, or excuse me, had it just a sweeping curve, then it went to a gravel or dirt road that connected through Pittsfield. And then ultimately, the village, I think around 1990 redesigned it to a teed intersection. But the right-of-way back then was, there was a plot of survey that was drafted. For some reason, it never was properly recorded down at Brown County, so that kind of just went away. The property owner did have a copy of some of those original documents, but without them being recorded at the time, they were pretty much useless. So he requested that we look into straightening out the right-of-way there. We had a land surveyor draft, a new plot of survey, which we will utilize with the transferring of the property now. So basically, we're gonna be giving up a little, he's gonna be giving up a little, and we're gonna straighten that out and give him back that sweeping curve. It's useless to the village, no sense in keeping it. And, you know, the property owner owned it prior, I guess, and he would appreciate his land back, which rightfully so. So through a quickly indeed, we will do the property transfer and carry on business. For tonight, though, we'd be looking at a preliminary resolution indicating the village's intent to vacate the excess right-of-way. And I think it has to go through a 40-day wait period or review period. And then we'll bring it back to the board, maybe a public hearing in there, and then we'll bring it back to the board for a final resolution following that 40-day. So that's kind of the process in place. On Exhibit A, you can kind of see how we split it up into Part A and Part B. The village will retain Part A, and the property owner will obtain possession of Parcel B, which kind of encompasses the sweeping curve, and he can have his corner of the field back.
Okay. Like, I mean, unless there's any other discussion, I mean, in light of the fact that it's it's far too small for a splash pad, I would offer the approval of Resolution 23019, a preliminary resolution indicating the village's intent to vacate the excess right-of-way on Oakdale Drive. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Trustee Rodden. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Can we do a roll call?
Sorry? Yes, it's a resolution.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Romas.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews is abstaining. Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
President Vinrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries 601.
Okay, very good. Item number 11, Resolution 23024, approving amended fee schedule and water rates. Director Magar.
Yes, another exciting topic tonight for, um...
You undersell your topics.
Well, we can't all buy both, so we're all just.
No, I get the dubious, um, honor of raising water rates. In 2022, the village water utility filed to raise rates because of the declining rate of return on investment. That resolved, that rate case was done in conjunction with CLA. Amber was here tonight and told you about, you know, she, she and the firm did the analysis work and stuff for projecting future costs and stuff to go into the rates that the PSC finally decided would give us the 6.2% rate of return that they consider the norm. On May 25th, they sent us their final decision along with the rates that are up for being included in the, um, the village's, um, fee schedule. Thank you, Andy. Having a senior moment? All right.
Moment.
And, thank you, Steve. But anyway, I had a file when we would enact those rates. And I put, so we didn't have to do a bunch of gyrations and do a bill that was part the old rate and part the new rate. We will start these rates June, as of June 14th, because that's the day after we just read meters to do the billing that's due in July for second quarter. So these rates won't take place until the new bill is due in September for the third quarter. So the new bill that the people will be getting now still are at the old rates. That'll be due July 20th. That's still at the old rates, because these new rates go into effect right after we took the read. And that's normally how it's handled. So the, I have on here, the typical single-family residential customer uses about 11,000 gallons. And based on that, it's an 11.54% increase just on the water bill. And that's what was required to get the return on our rate base at 6.2, which is what the PSC required. And I have on here how the PSC calculates this benchmark rate weekly based on the three-month rolling average of municipal bond rates. And they have said that this, the 6.2% is what the water utility needs to maintain confidence in our financial integrity of our water utility. So I'm asking that you approve the Resolution 23024, which has, incorporates the new rates that became effective June 14th.
As you know, I'm a water customer, and it stinks, but...
I'm a water customer too.
Yeah.
So...
Who comes up with the 11,000 gallons?
That's based on the usages for the year, they calculate all of that.
So we actually...
That's based on our customer base, residential customer base, number of residences divided by how many actual...
Gallons we actually use.
Right, and then they come up with the average.
We're way more than that.
What's that?
We're way more than that.
Yeah, I, I think some would be. I mean, that's, you know, so if, I mean, for a family of four, that's 100 and 121 gallons a day. Really per quarter, so.
Well, the PSC calculates 11,000.
Yeah, I'm just, sorry, I was, I'm off track.
We do it on 14,000 gallons.
One of you guys needs to bring me back when I go up.
Figures as average gallons.
One of you guys needs to bring me back when I run astray like this. Okay.
So...
Okay, well, I mean, it's for financial solvency, right? We don't really have much of a choice. You know, we haven't had an increase, the last increase was 2019.
Right.
So...
And remember, Amber was talking about how much in cash reserved for operating expenses and stuff.
That we need to write.
As you noticed, the water utility was much lower than the sewer utility for 2022 results. So this will add to that so that we can stay ahead of the game.
Okay.
And water isn't as ridiculous as the sewer rates are, but that's not much consolation.
Right, I think we're still the lowest in Brown, or one of the lowest in Brown County.
But it's, it's relevant, because if you have water, in most cases, you have sewer, and...
I, I can, you know, I...
And you're metered and you're screwed.
Some, some people have excellent well water. You know, some people have, I've got, you know, $2,500 worth of filter on my water. And my neighbors do too, so, you know, when you talk about paying water, you pay for it one way or another.
Yeah.
So I guess I'm okay. Would somebody like to offer, well, actually, offer a motion on this? Trustee Eckert, this is your bailiwick, would you like the honors?
It hurts.
Sometimes it's best just to tear the Band-Aid off.
Someone else can do it.
Yeah, I'd offer a motion to approve Resolution 23024, a resolution setting fees for village services permits and property used to implement the new water rates effective June 14th, 2023.
Second.
We've got a second from Trustee Andrews. Any further discussion, questions? Want to roll call this one?
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Romas.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider. Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
President Vinrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number 11, a Resolution 23024, approving amended fee schedule. Oh, we already just, we just did that one, sorry. We didn't have it checked off.
I'm back.
We're on 12. Yeah, no going back. Administrative items, Item A, Mink Ranch Road Village Property, Administrator Kager.
Thank you. So at the previous village board meeting, the board directed staff to bring back a total cost to prepare a CSM to split Parcel SU 542-1 into two parcels. I received two quotes, with the lowest coming from Mach 4 Engineering at $2,550. There will be additional fees from the village and Brown County totaling $1,130 for a grand total of $3,680. This would also include rezoning the new southern parcel from public lands and institutions to residential sewer. Funds could come from the sewer fund under the engineering line item, which was budgeted for $20,000 in 2023 and has not been used. Although, we are currently soliciting an RFP for a sewer impact fee study that will likely cost, we're estimating somewhere between 15 and 20,000. And a reminder too, that the proceeds from the eventual sale of the new southern parcel should cover the cost of the CSM and will reimburse the sewer fund. Any questions on that one?
And it includes that piece of land that Andy needs.
Correct, yep. And I, so I was talking to somebody who was interested in the property, and when we go through this process, there was a good idea, this is DNR land on this parcel, and this is a private property. So we'll probably make a notch so that whoever buys this would have access to the DNR land. And it might just be five, 10 feet of an alley.
Oh, that's good.
So we'll include that in the CSM.
I'll make a motion to authorize the expenditure of not to exceed $3,680 from the sewer fund to prepare a CSM splitting parcel SU 542-1 into two parcels as presented.
A second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to approve the, to authorize the expenditure not to exceed $3,680 for the sewer fund to prepare a CSM. We have that seconded by Trustee Romas. Any other further questions or discussion? It is an expenditure, so let's stick with it and do a roll call.
Trustee Romas.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
President Vinrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Item 12B, Fee Waiver Policy, Administrator Kager.
Thank you. So the village board has recently requested a formal written policy as it relates to the waiving of special event fees, and below is a draft policy for the board's consideration. This would be something that would be added to our operating policies. It would not be a municipal code. And basically, the, the main difference is it's a lot easier for you to change, there's no second reading of it. You could just make this effective immediately if you liked it. I left it relatively vague to give you some discretion, but curious to hear your feedback on the drafted.
I think you did a good job. I, I think that you hit everything that we discussed. You know, kind of leaving it alone and leaving it up for discretion. I think you hit those points.
I also made a point of emphasis, technically, when you submit a special events permit, you're supposed to submit it 60 days or more in advance of your event. And a lot of times, we get them like the week of the event, and then staff have to scramble to make sure that things are done correctly. So if they're gonna be requesting a waiver of the fee, I really want to make it, you have to submit that 60 days in advance for you to be considered to have your fee waived.
I did catch that, and I do appreciate that, because it could be, we can't fit it in this board meeting, it'll have to be next month, and
That too.
That'd take enough time, so.
You might have to put it into a board meeting some night when you've got 14 agenda items. Or 17 agenda items, and now you have 18. I agree, 60 days makes sense. Could be here all night otherwise.
I'll make a motion to add Section 1.11, Special Event Fee Waiver Policy to the village of Swamaco operating policies as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor from Trustee Andrews to add the Section 1.11, Special Event Fee Waiver Policy to the village of Swamaco operating policies as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
We've got a second from Trustee Netto. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 70. Thank you. Item 12C, Public Facilities Needs Assessment and Park Impact Fee Study, Administrator Kager.
Thank you. So earlier this year, the village board expressed an interest in adjusting the park impact fee as it has not been changed from the $300 for, per REU since 2008. And to update this fee, a park facility needs assessment and park impact fee study must be adopted that justifies the new amount. And I have drafted a study following the state statute guidelines and incorporating information from the most recently approved Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan. I had our attorney review the document, and they believe it meets all the statutory requirements. And the results of the draft study would give the village board the authority to increase the park impact fee to an amount not to exceed $664 per REU. However, any such change cannot be made to the fee until the needs of study is adopted by the board. And then prior to adoption of the study, the draft study must be made available for public review for at least 20 days prior to a public hearing. And then in addition to this, an amendment to the municipal code was recommended by our village attorney to explicitly state the park impact fee procedure, and a copy of that ordinance was included in your packet. And so barring objection from the village board, I would publish this as a Class 1 notice for a public hearing at our next village board meeting, which would be July 17th. Reminder, we don't have a July 3rd meeting, and that would be for a public hearing for both the needs assessment study and the ordinance. So are there any questions on this item?
Yeah, so that would leave you 20 days. Is that prior or after that?
Prior, so we'll have to advertise it in the next week or so in the paper that we're having a public hearing on both the needs assessment study and on the ordinance itself.
Okay.
So by having a public hearing for the ordinance, you do not need two readings.
So you don't need a, a motion to have you do the public hearing, let's just do it?
Barring objection, that's just the direction I would take.
Objection.
Anyone have any questions or discussion or care to object to this item?
On page eight, does it insinuate that the fees are going up automatically?
Page eight.
Where, where do you reference?
Okay, so this would give you the option, and that would be in the, the ordinance itself, where it would be, just like your water and sewer impact fees, it would automatically get adjusted every year. You don't have to choose that option if you don't want to, but that's just the, the baseline that I put in there, so...
Are we choosing that by approving this?
Not by approving this, it would be approving the ordinance. So if you want an adjustment to the ordinance to take that language out, I can take that language out.
Because if we're gonna, I think we're talking about whether to keep it the same or at a later date.
Why don't you take the language out of this, and then we can approve, just take the dollars out of it so that...
Well, so, so maybe we're talking two different things here. So if you were to adopt this study, it doesn't change your park impact fee.
Okay.
You would have to make a separate motion after the adoption of the study to change the fee.
And then every year.
And then in future years, you can have the option of either just letting it be what it was, or you can have a similar approach like you do with the water and sewer impact fees, where those are automatically updated every year based on the E and R. And that's something that we talked about in the previous meeting of, do we want to just make sure it stays up with inflation? So that's what I had put in here.
So he used, he, he used $664 as an example to show that at a regular 30-year mortgage at 4%, it would cost the homeowner, the additional cost of the home would be $3. So I think $664 was only used as an example.
Well, that's what, that's what you would have as a village board, the authority to go up to $664. So you might...
But next year, it would automatically change, and I'm not for that.
Okay, and it may not even be $664. So after the adoption of the study, there will be another line item in the agenda for the board to consider adjusting the fee. And that could be $200, $400, $600, up to $664. That's a separate discussion.
And then also the discuss, I think as we do all of our fee schedules every year, this should be one of those that, if we wanted to, so if we leave that language in there, two years from now, if we wanted to, we could pull that out and say, no, it shouldn't increase by 3% this year, let's keep it the same. We have every right as a board to do that approach.
Yeah.
Just like any other fee schedule. You know how we pulled the, the holler fee out, or we were gonna increase all, we can do anything we want with the fees every year. But to have that automatically in there so it triggers a review every year, I think is important.
I think I'm not for it if that's in there, because I don't, because we, maybe we'll get in the habit of just accepting it. I, I don't, I don't want it to automatically increase, and if it stays in, I'm not for it.
So I think what we could do, we'll advertise it with it. And then when it's up for either approval or rejection, you can make the approval, removing that line from the code.
I like that, because I want board, I don't want it removed, no, I want board consensus to...
Make, make your vote at the next meeting.
Right.
I don't mind that it's in there as an example, but...
What, is this a first reading, or?
This is not a first reading, this is just a presentation of what it could look like.
So that he can publish it for the mandatory 20 days for a public hearing.
So you, you're not taking any action on it tonight?
Okay.
We're not adopting.
Except to not object.
Correct, barring objection.
Okay. So do we have board consensus that he can move forward to publish this then?
Yes.
A public hearing.
Not mine.
What's that?
Not mine.
Um, so we, we...
So we do have objection.
We have, so we have a consensus on the board, but we have one objection. Yes?
Do you wanna, do you need a motion at all to move forward?
I think I have an understanding of the majority of the board, but if you feel more comfortable to make a motion, you...
We're good.
I'm good.
It's not motion everything to death.
Forward.
Forward. Thank you. Discussion on future agenda items, anyone?
Um, so I think there was some discussion about additional training for the board. I mean, some of us have been around for a long time, going through all sorts of different training. I know that, I can't remember, Michelle went down, but it was new.
Went a couple times.
Yeah, so there's all sorts of different training, and I think one of them is, you know, I know I struggle with it sometimes, because I'm in the, I deal with a lot of contractors, and a lot of contractors that bid on stuff of ours, whether I should vote or whether I shouldn't. So do you have any kind of training that, that would be provided that lets me know and that I can ask questions about, because I do, you know, I deal with Peters Concretes, I deal with these guys that, that vote on stuff of ours.
I think...
It's not, it's not directly benefiting me, but...
I think our, the lobbying firm that we have, the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, I think they do have an attorney on staff that will come up and give a presentation, and if they don't, I'm sure our attorney could come and give just a general overview of your ethical responsibilities as a board when it relates to, to voting on issues. If that's what you're getting.
I think it would be helpful.
On a light night, though.
On a light night.
Yes.
We'll find a light night.
On a light night.
Are there light nights? I don't know.
Haven't been lately. It's all because of the new trustee we got on the board.
Oh, and I think, so the other thing, I had another agenda, not really even an agenda item, but I think being that activity is starting on Lineville Road, to make sure that we have that as like something that's on our front page of our Facebook page, so people know where to go. But the problem was, and I was just speaking to Andy about it, is if you go to the Brown County website, there's no time, like, they have these pretty pictures, but there's no timetable attached to them. So if we could put something, maybe some little timetable together that says, hey, phase one, phase two, phase three, or maybe we can, I know those are huge documents, so they're gonna be hard to, for people to open up, but maybe if we even put those documents into our website, because I think it's gonna impact a lot of people. What's that?
Would it help if we had some physical map in our office here?
Yeah, I think that would, I think that would help.
I mean, for...
Yeah, do they have, and I didn't, couldn't find it, do they have the map of this section, this section, this section? Okay, that would be a helpful map to have, and maybe have that map on our website.
Right, and you'll get a much better phasing schedule of each section come the year of construction. So they don't have a lot of stuff forecast for next year just yet, because they don't know which contractor's gonna be here when, so they're gonna pick, you know, week by week schedule, but once the project's let for next year, they'll give us a schedule.
So just real quick, if you go to stage one, don't open it.
I opened it.
Oh, so there's stage one, but if you go to stage two?
Well, this is stage two, so they must have made a goof.
Yeah, so there's already goofs in this thing, but there's no timetable here, so this is what they're doing this year, from what I understand?
Sure. Yeah, there's no time.
Yeah, but you have to go, go back once. You have to go to, go up. Up.
Here?
You gotta go to 2023 Construction.
Yep. Research, uh, weekly milestone schedule, I think that's what it is.
Yeah.
And you have to find it in here.
So they only produce that once a year, so we won't get 24.
Well, this is a weekly one that they update.
Right, but it's only for 2023's Construction.
Oh, right, yeah, 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 yeah.
We just, I think it'd be good to say, okay, so people can see, this is section, this section, this section, this is how it's gonna go.
And we can make a, our own version and just say anticipated.
I get asked, that's probably one of the biggest questions I get asked, is what's going on with Lineville? And I always direct them to this page. Well, I finally went to the page and looked at it today, I was like, okay, those are pretty pictures, but they're not providing the information our, our residents need.
There is a PM this Thursday too, at 2:00.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that's just observation.
Anything else? Anyone else have an item?
I'd just like to bring one thing up. Maybe in the future, look at Swamaco adopting something about Airbnbs. They're growing. As we sat last meeting with the chamber, the 18 to 35-year-olds really don't own a house. And the way it's going right now, they're not gonna own a house, because if these properties keep coming up that these kids can afford, it's just the people with money going out and buying them. Pretty quick, we're not gonna have residents. And I know there's residents in Swamaco that are very unhappy about the Airbnbs being moved into their neighborhoods. This is different people coming in on a daily basis that we don't know from all over the place. I'm not saying I'm against the Airbnbs whatsoever, but I sure in the hell wouldn't want the house next door to me as an Airbnb.
I didn't know we had to go, I, I mean, I know all about them, but I didn't know that issue was going on in Swamaco, so we should...
The house on Riverside Drive, to my understanding...
Well, we don't have to get into it tonight, but...
But the guy bought it for $450,000 and he... But the guy bought it for $450,000, and he's going to Airbnb it.
That's definitely an agenda item that...
So is this an agenda item that goes back to planning and zoning for discussion?
Well, I know Planning and Zoning talked about it, was it last year?
I think it was last year.
So, and I think there was a decision to not do anything with it. There need to be more direction, like, what do you want to do about it?
You can't prevent them.
Well, Howard...
But you can do stricter laws as Ashwabanon did.
Well, that's right, so, so why don't we, why don't we look at what Ashwabanon did? And can we bring that to Planning and Zoning with a request to see if that would be appropriate?
Sure.
Yeah, that's a good place to start.
Ashwabanon's ordinance.
Yeah, we've got it, so here it is.
I've got it digital.
Okay. So we'll take that, we'll take Ashwabanon's ordinance for discussion back to Planning and Zoning.
As long as we leave a weekend in 2025 out of it, I'm good. A long weekend.
Six days.
A two-week weekend?
Not that long.
Six days, whatever it is.
Seven consecutive days, I think, for ordinance.
That's as strict as you can go.
Anyway, okay, anything else, any other items? Otherwise, I need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
We got a motion from Trustee Rodden to move into closed session, closed session to, per Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, parent one, paren C, considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. This evening, we'll be entertaining the annual village administrative review. Is there a second to this item?
Second.
We got a second from Trustee Schneider. Madam Clerk?
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Romes.
Aye.
President Vin Rossum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Terrific, go into closed session.
You'll grab me when you're ready?
Yes, sir. Thank you.